This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Business Meeting for January 23rd, 2019. To begin with this evening, as is our usual procedure, we offer the opportunity for public participation. Any members of the public that are in attendance here in the room are welcome to address the board with a question or a comment. We ask that you raise your hand and be recognized and move to the podium, give us your name and address, and we ask that you please be brief. So is there anyone here this evening who wishes to address the board during public comment that's not already on the agenda? I see that we have none tonight for public participation. We will move on. May we please have a motion for approval of our agenda?
So moved.
We need to make a change in the date. It's the 22nd.
Thank you. You're right, I just read it the way it was printed. A motion to approve the agenda with the date changed from January 23rd to January 22nd, 2019, just to make sure everything's all official. Moved by Larry, seconded by Karen. Amended, amended. Thank you very much. Thank you, Marv and Julie.
We're running a day out.
We're just, we're working so fast right now, days are flying by. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Motion please for approval of minutes from our January 8th meeting?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Andrea. Does anyone have any corrections, additions, deletions to those minutes? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. We're pleased tonight to welcome our Bosie Superintendent, Monroe One Bosie Superintendent, Dan White, who is here and makes usually an annual visit to update us on a few things. And welcome, Dan, and we ask that you enlighten us, welcome this evening. And we also welcome our member of the Bosies Board, Sora Sax, who is here tonight also in attendance. So thank you both for coming, we appreciate it.
Well, we appreciate the opportunity to talk to you for a very few brief moments this evening. I promise to be very brief on that. First of all, I want to say thank you to you as always, to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education, Dr. McGowan and his staff. You're great partners, and as you know, we are cooperative and we are only as strong as our participating districts. So we thank you for that. You've been great partners over the years, and we appreciate the camaraderie and the collegiality. Got a couple of things for you tonight. First of all, we've developed a very short video, which is really an update of our student-based programs. I think many of you know that we do a wide variety and range of services, some of which are student-based programs, special education program, and career and technical education. We know it is difficult always for boards of education to come in and visit every year, although you've been here very, you've been through our facilities very recently, but we thought we'd do a short video tour to give you a quick update, what's going on in our student programs. It's about a four-minute video. I'm going to then pause to answer any questions you might have on that, and then I want to talk to you very briefly about some capital work that we're going to be doing at Monroe One. So let me get this going for you here. We created this short video tour so they can see some of the things that we offer students here at Monroe One. When students come to attend our programs, they work on the near-state learning standards, they prepare for college and career, and they learn how to become productive members of their community and society.
Over the past 60 years, Monroe One has evolved to meet the needs of the greater Rochester area. Offering 17 high school-level career and technical programs, your students will leave our Eastern Monroe Career Center, ready to transition to college or go directly into competitive employment. They will have learned to become responsible team members with a strong work ethic and desire to further develop their critical thinking skills. Children with disabilities have a tremendous ability to learn, but they just learn differently. At Monroe One, we offer a full range of rigorous special education programs and services to the children in your community. Our special education programs and services offer school districts cost-effective options that meet all the regulatory requirements and expand the educational options available to the students in your districts. A full range of services and programs are offered for over 675 students, ages 3 through 21. Programs range from fully inclusive to center-based schools. Instructional programs offer opportunities for groupings based upon students' educational, physical, and management needs.
Byrd Morgan School, located in East Rochester, serves 145 special education students in kindergarten through 8th grade. Programs provide students with the engaging instruction and emotional support they need to realize their potential as learners and members of the community. The school team collaborates daily to cultivate instructional and therapeutic approaches that best meet the diverse needs of students. Creekside School is a center-based program serving 300 students with multiple disabilities, ages 5 through 21. Within the 1214 self-contained setting, students develop academic, communication, daily living, and social skills that will provide the foundation for lifelong success. Creekside uses a multidisciplinary collaborative approach for developing individualized programs in core subject areas as well as pro-social skills, functional communication, and adaptive living skills. Students also benefit from the community-based instruction and a variety of life skills activities. The Eastern Monroe Career Center offers career training for over 700 high school students to prepare for workplace careers in fields such as construction, professional health services, laboratory technician, computer repair, culinary arts, and emergency services, to precision manufacturing and welding. Our students are well-prepared for work, college, or post-secondary training, and enter the real world with hands-on experience and specific skills required to make an impact on the very first day on the job. The multi-occupational and focus programs are primarily for over 220 high school students with special needs. Students have the opportunity to develop the skills and attitudes they will need to succeed in work and life after high school. O'Connor Academy is a small structured 611 special education program for over 90 high school students in grades 9 through 12. Students are provided all the necessary requirements to achieve a New York State Regents or Local Diploma and/or a CEDOS credential. They are also eligible to participate in career and technical education classes or in a vocational program on campus. Project Search is a partnership with Wegmans, who provides employment training, and Monroe One Bosies, who provides education to students with developmental disabilities in their last year of school eligibility to prepare them for competitive employment. Transition Opportunities at the University of Rochester, or TOUR, is a college program serving 24 students ages 18 through 21 with intellectual disabilities. Students work towards completing their portfolio, which includes taking college classes and participating in college clubs and activities. E-Start is a 9th through 12th program designed for students with average to above-average academic skills. E-Start is a 611 collaboration with Hillside Children's Center, located in the Carlton Webster Building in Hemereta. The program provides an academic setting with the support of Hillside clinicians to meet students' needs. Students and families continue to access community supports for their psychiatric care and management. Transition programs are designed for students 18 through 21-years of age with multiple challenges. Instructional emphasis is placed on the development of skills at work, at home, and in the community. The program is located in the 12 Corners Elementary School in the Brighton Central School District.
I hope you enjoyed this little tour. We would invite you to come visit us for part or all of the day and meet some of the students and faculty that make these programs so special. Thank you. So it's just great seeing yourself up on video. I get to do it 10 times as we visit, as we visit board meetings. So a couple of quick points. Many of those programs you've seen because you've recently visited, I can tell you in the 10 years, and it's hard to believe I've been here 10 years, 10 years since I've been at Monroe One, really the needs of the students in our communities have dramatically changed in many ways, and our economy has changed. So, you know, we now offer five different career and technical education programs based upon the medical field, which would make some sense in the Rochester area. If you look at some of our manufacturing-based programs, they're really half, you know, manufacturing skills, half coding, as you would expect. So there's really been some evolution of those things, and really our special education programs have evolved, as you've seen, needs of your learners evolve in your buildings, so have we, because we are, like you, a reflection of our community. We happen to be a reflection of maybe the broader community. So all of those things kind of drive our programs and our needs, and again, we're thankful for your participation and your partnership as a district. So before I move on, I'm going to pause there to see if I can answer any questions or take any comments you might have.
Just a quick comment, Dan. You mentioned that we did have a wonderful visit out at the Fairport Campus a month or two months ago now, and, you know, it's amazing. We try to come out every two years, and I think we thought that maybe we should really try to do it every year because we can't even, in that time we're there, we can't fit everything in. We'd love to see, so I think we're going to try to look at that. But it's just a wonderful collaboration and partnership, and the work that's being done in all the different locations by you and your folks is fantastic, and we have so many Brighton students that take advantage of all those programs, and I think it was a pleasure for us and certainly in education to be able to spend some time on the campus and see some of those programs in action. So thank you for that opportunity.
Well, we appreciate, and you know you're always welcome to come out anytime, anytime you would like. So if I may, I may do a quick transition here. Many of you know, since you've been out to the former center, you know that facility was built in the early 60s, like any facility built in that timeframe. There's been a lot of patches, so to speak, put on those buildings, but it's time for us to do a more significant renovation. It's a discussion that we've been having with, you know, our component superintendents and business officials. I know Lou, you had that conversation at the business officials meeting last week. We've really been talking about it for two or three years, because one of the things we're trying to avoid when Bosies does capital work, because of how the tax cap works, our local share of debt service is not exempt from the tax levy cap as local districts are. Bosies is not. So that puts upward pressure on, and it can put upward pressure on component district budgets, which we are not intending to do. We do not want to push anybody to a problem with the tax levy limit. So we spent the last couple of years really having some pretty significant conversations with our steering committees, with some of the, you know, the groups from our component districts to figure out a way to do that, that it would not impact districts' tax levy cap. So we think we've been able to do that. Where districts are going to have a couple of options. You're going to be hearing more about that in the spring as we, superintendents are going to have another conversation about that next week at the CSO meeting. It is work that is necessary for us to get done. One of the things I think you know is, given the nature of programming that we provide, both special education and CT, it is infrastructurally intensive, certainly, and for us to, you know, maintain our industry accreditation and provide the real atmosphere and the facilities that special education students need, it does mean that we have to do some upgrades from time to time. So again, we've worked in partnership, which we hope we do always, to make sure that we can do it in a way that's fiscally responsible for our component district. So I'm expecting you're going to hear more about that in the spring. Because it is simply renovation, it is not acquisition of new property or a new build, it does not require a referendum, but it does require a vote of each board of education, which is, other than I love coming to visit, of course, it's one of the reasons I'm going around to visit component districts, so they can hear that we've been thoughtful about this as we move forward.
Well, we appreciate that. We appreciate you coming out. Lou, as, and Kevin both have kept us appraised of that, because we're aware, and we had some conversation with you and your people when we visited. I know you've been trying to plan prudently for a couple of years now. I think we all would certainly agree that there are certain segments of programming that you just are out of space. It's not appropriate, and you need more space, and you need the right space, and it's the right, you know, build out to that space. So we appreciate that, and we look forward to working together to make it happen in a way that's as fiscally responsible as possible.
Sure, works for everybody, so.
Well, thank you. Does anybody else have anything for Dan tonight? Thanks for coming.
We appreciate the time. Thanks very much. Have a great evening.
And Sora, thank you too. We appreciate you coming out.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome, anytime. And continuing on this evening, another presentation that we're very proud and pleased. Another group of students from one of our clubs, the Lorax Club, is going to be presenting to us, and George Smith is here as the facilitator of the club, and we welcome two of our students. And I'll ask you to introduce yourselves, please. I don't have your name on the agenda, so I apologize for that. And I will remind folks at home that the folks from Lorax Club have given us a tremendous amount, Hassan and Jake, I assume are here this evening? There we go, have given us a tremendous amount of information, including a supplemental piece tonight, and all of the material, including all of our agenda material, is posted online. So members of the community at home are welcome to look through that also. So welcome.
Okay. So we're representatives of the Lorax Club from Brighton High School. I'm Jake Shapiro, and this is...
Hassan Yuti.
Okay. So first, I inform all of you, the goals and objectives of Lorax Club mainly is just to increase reforestation efforts locally, as well as inspire others to go and take it with them when they potentially leave our district. In addition, we want to help educate Brighton citizens and students about efforts and proper technique for how they can maintain trees and what type of trees they should plant in their local areas. And we're also looking for potential ways to gather funding for additional tree planting efforts. So Lorax Club is not just about super environmentally. We also have goals about how our club can make social impacts. People are able to see when they come back, or when they have kids and are here, how, "Oh, I planted that tree." It's really great for them to be able to see, like, long-term impacts of how they've impacted their community. And we have a quote here from the CDC that states about how gardening is an effective way to have physical activity, and how that can help with high blood pressure, heart disease, stroke, and many other things. It also helps to raise awareness about how our actions can affect our environment. So here we have a couple images of our student volunteers from the high school, helping to plant stuff along the creek, and then we have our local brownies helping to remove litter. So it kind of just shows how participation in the environment is very diverse, and anyone can really help out, and all types of helping to improve the environment make a difference.
So as Jake said, one of the main things that we do is plant trees, which leads to an increase in urban tree cover. And the numbers listed on here are for the Monroe County based off of a comparable community called Appleton in Wisconsin, and these benefits are significant. So for example, if you look at the stormwater runoff reduction, if urban tree cover is implemented on a large scale, it could potentially save up to $500,000. Looking through energy savings, another $500,000. So clearly, like, the economic impact is considerable. Now, this is an ecological restoration project that we took part in. To the left is the before picture. It's like a barren landscape essentially. And then to the right, we introduced bushes and various species to improve the biodiversity of the area. And today, we asked for the support to continue our tree planting program on school district property, and to continue developing partnerships with outside organizations related to external funding and donations, and lastly, to develop partnerships with inside organizations such as the Town of Brighton and other environmental community groups that can help support activities off school property. And that is all. We thank you for your time in listening to us.
Well, thank you both for coming this evening and for the material that you had previously provided us, and especially for the work that you and the rest of the club have engaged in over the years, really. And it's just, it's wonderful to see when we walk our campus and around the community, but I think especially in a community like Brighton, which is a very tree-friendly community, as you guys well know, and the policies that the Town of Brighton has and their tree-management type programs, it's really helped facilitate that effort and that work hopefully to spread wider amongst Monroe County and beyond. So we'll certainly look at the recommendations and the thoughts that you shared as far as specific to the board, and we'll talk, take a look at that and talk about that further. But we do appreciate you coming tonight. We appreciate your commitment to this work. It's so important, and thank you very much. Is anyone still any questions or...
You could tell in the creek bed how, I just love to see the change. You've done a great job, so.
And seasonally, it's just a wonderful thing, too, when you walk.
It's good to see. Have you presented to the town yet, or is that something you're planning to do?
That's a future goal.
I thought you guys did a great job, and I love the projects, like the new trees outside the window to my office, too. Thank you.
Oh, you got a tree out there?
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's a couple new trees planted.
We could give our address on there.
Dr. Smith brings you out on very windy days. I saw you guys out there one day braving the elements, but to Dr. Smith, thank you, because that, the left-hand side, it's, the picture almost doesn't do it justice, really.
It's a huge difference.
George, if you remember, too, I think those are grass clippings, right, that were all in there?
And I think the trash was removed first and then the picture, because there used to be a lot of things accumulated in there, too.
It's really pretty remarkable to see what happened in that whole project as that started, and how that's grown now. It's really quite beautiful, so thank you for that and making a big difference, too.
And you know, the other thing I would comment on, and I'm not sure how many Brightonians have really paid close attention, but it fits so well with the Monroe Avenue Clean Waters Project that is now, I think, complete for all the replantings that were done, and one of the first areas, of course, was around 12 Corners on the middle school campus and in front of this building here. And that's beautifully done, and it fits right nicely in with the creek work and the other work that your club, the club has done with tree planting and additional plantings around the campus, so thank you.
I'd like to thank Lou and Rob Luce, too, whose answers are why not instead of why, and I think that that's really great, so thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight. Thank you. All right, it sort of leads us right into our next element of business this evening. Tonight, really, I turned it over to Dr. McGowan to begin with Lou, and our budget review, current status as we start the more, more public process of our budget for 2019, 2020. And again, a reminder to folks, whether you're watching live or on the YouTube channel on a streaming at a later date, all of our material is posted online. There will be an entire section devoted to budget work that will continue to be updated from now through the time of budget adoption in May, so.
So the agenda tonight started out a daily, maybe it was a day early, now this is the dollar shortage part. So the budget presentation, I've been waiting now for like 10 minutes, I almost even forgot that, I couldn't wait to show it. I'm going to give you a real quick sketch of the budget process, and I promise you, although we're going to hear this over and over again, I will try and spice it up every time I tell you about our circular, cyclical, non-stop throughout the year budget process, and this is the first, as you know, of many, many budget presentations throughout the next couple of months. We start, of course, by assessing our needs. We do that throughout the year. We look at the programs that kids have, the program that kids need, and what our assessment is internally of what we should be doing going forward. We identify issues that need to be addressed in future year budgets, develop plans around those potential issues, and then take a look at what resources do we have that can support new initiatives, that can support the type of planning that goes into developing a program for the following year. We revise those plans then, based on resources that are available and the information we learned throughout the year, and then evaluate the results of programs and initiatives that we have started the year before. So that's the process that we go through, frankly, the entire year as we're developing the budget. We also ask you to set budget guidelines for us, and this happens previously in the year. The first part are the priorities, of course, and those are set in August of every year as part of the blueprint planning, what's presented to you as our strategic plan. But then the budget guidelines, we come to you in September and October to discuss, and they really boil down to making sure that we're supporting the priority areas that are in the blueprint plan, making sure that we have the right resources available to support every student in terms of their college or career process and their planning, that we're reflective of the economic climate as well as changing student needs, and that we want to prioritize our resources to make sure that we're also looking at where we can reduce and consolidate and be as efficient as possible. Then we also added this year, continue to implement strategies to meet our short and long-term goals around facilities, modernization, also considering the volatile market, both to labor shortage, the bid process, and potential tariff issues. We wanted to make sure we're prudently planning for the implementation of full-day kindergarten September 2021, Larry Davis, and debt service impact that you as a community supported in 2017, but that will start to hit our books very, very shortly. We're going to talk about that, not just in this presentation, but in presentations throughout the process, and understand the impact of the property tax cap on our long-term financial planning, and that's a big part of what we need to talk to you about tonight, and where we're heading. Several years ago, this community approved going over the cap, and we had a very thoughtful discussion with the community over many years about expenditures in a given year, about our need to stay under the cap as much as possible, but essentially to be honest with our community. So some municipalities, as they have planned for a property tax cap, both schools and local municipalities, have gone right up to their cap number and maximized that number every year, figuring, well, if we're under the cap. We've not approached it that way. We've approached our community with, here's what we need, and here's why, and here's where our thought process is, and here's what we've done to be as efficient as possible. And yes, in most years, we've been able to say, and good news, that's under the cap. But we have had the occasion to also say, it is more than the cap this year, because those are what the needs are going forward, and developing essentially what is a needs-based budget. So we have to have that conversation as well, both this year and going into the future, about what that means and what the right time to look at going over the cap may be in order to prudently plan strategically for the long term. The development calendar, of course, this is the first really of the presentations, the preliminary blueprint recommendations. We didn't have any in the last meeting, other than to give you a sense of where we were in the blueprint, but this is the first of the budget presentations, post the governor announcing in his state-of-the-state last week what the preliminary budget numbers would be for us in his proposal. So we have that information for you. Of course, then, this iterative process, it evolves over time until we get to the point on May 21st where we're asking the community to vote on the budget that you approve at a board meeting prior to that. Considering a lot of community input in between, we will have hearings as well, opportunities at every one of these meetings, and all these dates are posted on the website, as are all of our budget materials all the time. But we will also be launching a thought exchange to ask people how they feel about the budget and what their concerns, their priorities, their suggestions might be, and that will begin next week. Again, I'll mention that at the end as well. So where are we starting out? We've got our known budget factors on the left-hand side, and on the right-hand side, the things we need to take a look at. Well, the known factors are the increased staffing demands, and that's student enrollment, changing student needs, and whatever the changing students, I'm sorry, standards and regulations might be. So we know those things already. We know what our labor increases are and changes to minimum wage. That's a known factor, that's already established, that's a calculation we can come up with. We know that we'll have a modest rate increase in 1819 for the health insurance programs that allows funding for 1920. Our pension contribution rates will decrease coming into next year. We know that number already. Our multi-year impact of capital project and the implementation of full-day K, again, we know that. We know those numbers, we know where we're heading, and we can predict those for you. And we know what the tax cap number will be. We'll talk about that tonight, and then you'll approve that at a future meeting as well. The allowable tax levy growth around 2%, just slightly higher than that in this given year. The budget factors on the right-hand side that we have to take a look at. Well, what are the changes in mandated student services education plans? So what are the changes that are going to happen over the next couple of months for our current students going into next year? What particular programs will they need, and how do we make sure we're funding all that? Student elective demands. What are our kids interested in? We're asking them right now, they're developing schedules right now. That drives part of our staffing increases as well. Changes in state and federal aids. We know that the governor has advanced a proposal netting on an $80 million budget to taxpayers of this community, a grand total of $76,000. That is nearly, at this point, $7 million short, $7 million short of what is promised to you as taxpayers in the foundation aid formula. It's only 54% of what you're actually going to do. So we know that right now, but we need to assess, what will the legislature do? How much will they be able to increase that number? What are the proposals on the table, and what will that mean for this particular budget? Right now, it's at a place that should be completely... Right now, it's at a place that should be completely unacceptable to any taxpayer. It's not where it needs to be. The diversion of funds to poorer districts, what will happen based on the implementation of some form of the foundation aid formula? Where will funds be diverted? Where will funds go to relative to the type of district? What will that mean for Brighton? We have a different political dynamic in Albany now with a democratically-controlled state senate that tends to change the impact for upstate districts, and there's a different balance between upstate and downstate when the assembly is a downstate-dominated body. So what does that mean for us, and how will that work? We'll work very closely with Assemblywoman Jamie Romeo, our new Assemblymember, and of course Senator Joe Robach. I'm so glad that Jamie is on the scene. We can't just say the two Joes anymore, right? It is Jamie Romeo, of course, and Joe Robach. And our new unfunded mandates, what else will we have to be doing going into future years? We're right now debating substantial equivalency regulations with the State Ed Department, which essentially say, we will be responsible for helping schools around us become substantially equivalent if they are not. We think the non-public schools around us are, but is there a responsibility on our part to provide any additional funding? We're exploring that right now, and in a state where we're trying to figure that out from the State Education Department. We'll have to take a look at volatility in federal politics and funding reliability. So these issues, for example, food stamp benefits, which will be paid in February. It's a pass-through dollar amount for the state. We don't have a part in that, but it's a good example of, that will stop at the end of February with the current shutdown. What will our state do? Will they continue to fund food stamp benefits during a period of time while the government stays shut down, or will it not be shut down? There are a lot of federal impacts on our school budget that we need to continue to explore. The title funding is all federal money, of course, and we don't know the status of that going forward. It passes through the state. Will the state still advance that money before the federal government pays it? We don't know the answer to that yet. And navigating the tax gap and the implications, of course, as well, we'll have to continue to explore what that means for us. What is the allowable growth for our levy? And is this the right year, as we again plan cyclically with our community, to come out and ask for what we need as opposed to a number randomly driven by CPI, developed by the state, not excluding things that should be excluded from the tax cap number? I'd like to talk to you a little bit about our enrollment trends, just to give you a sense for where we are right now. Small numbers, a little bit difficult to see, so if you take a look, you get a general sense for growth on the left-hand side, as you can see that bar chart. Up on the top, those are the, each of the grade levels, so kindergarten half, first, second, third, fourth, and fifth grades. This is the K through five enrollment trends, of course. And the numbers range, of course, the lowest around 160, close to 160, those are the half-day, that's the half-day kindergarten number, up to 320 at the top of the chart. We don't reach that number, so just over 300. So some of our largest classes over the last several years have typically been at fourth and fifth grade. We're seeing, going into the projection now, actually, the historical 2018 where those went up, and that bubble passed and went a little bit down. But looking ahead, look at 21, 22, we are projecting 237 kids when we start full-day kindergarten. Right now, we're at 187. This year, looking to go up just slightly, that number will stay pretty steady, but then go up when we go to full-day K. Now, that number, usually for us, grows into first grade already, because many people, when we have a full day for first grade, start to send their kids to our school, and then bump again when our kids go to French Road in third grade. So if you just take a look at that, for example, the 1819 class right now at 187 in kindergarten is likely to grow to 232 next year, 246 the year after that, 256. We do continue to increase, and our classes get bigger over time as more and more kids come back to the district. And then there seems to be a phenomenon when people choose to transfer, or the general age of their kids, when they are likely to have different job opportunities that might bring them to Rochester. We notice a particular, for whatever reason, there seems to be a timeframe in elementary school where that tends to happen, probably people thinking, I'd like to settle in a certain place before my kids get to middle and high school. But again, we continue to see growth, where you get asked the question, community members might ask you, are we shrinking? Like a lot of other suburban districts throughout New York State, no, the answer is we're not. As a matter of fact, we continue to grow, and I think that speaks to the quality of the program offered by our staff as well, and the support of our community. We're a place that people would like to be. Our elementary class size, then, what has happened to that over time, and what are we looking at going forward? If you take a look at 1819, so current year, it gives you a sense of what the enrollment is at every grade level, including those half-day sections in kindergarten, but the generally very small class size that our community has supported. So right now, 1819, that's all the way there on the left, you can see the ratio, the average class size from K through five. If you take a look at 1920, this is what we're projecting going into next year. The analysis on the right-hand side shows you, as you make decisions in the budget process, what it would mean to add a teacher or take a teacher away, a particular section in each one of those grade levels. And as you can see, there's a pretty significant impact, especially as you get to third, fourth, and fifth grade, around the average class size and what that eventually will mean. Average class trends, I'm sorry, average trends in terms of class size. This is just a good analysis for you relative to what our local neighbors are experiencing as well, and you can see generally, we're at a pretty good place. Thanks very much. You guys are fantastic, full service. You saw that coming. They've seen the show before. Just to give you a very general sense of where we are relative to other people, right in the ballpark, and in some cases, we've been able to get even smaller. You take a look at 2017, our average class size at the elementary, 20.9, is lower than it was the previous two years, and lower than most other districts right around us. Again, our neighbors here in Monroe County, been able to keep a much smaller class size, and you prioritize that as a board and as a community. Same type of slide, taking a look at what our enrollment trends are at the middle level. 1819, we're at 281 at sixth grade, 333 seventh grade, 321 eighth grade, and you can see those are not going to change dramatically, although we'll see another bubble in sixth grade next year, 1920. We're planning then for a drop, the seventh grade group, and our large eighth grade group going over to the high school, as Dr. Ellis said, won't require any new staff, he's very glad that he's pointed that out, will be, you know, we'll see another large group in the eighth grade next year. So again, you can see that growth, where if you take a look at the orange blocks, is that class will continue to be big, you can see how the bubbles will move through in terms of large classes. And then the enrollment and staffing, of course, at the high school, up at its highest level will be about 1,350 kids in 2023, up 170 students over that period of time. So we continue, again, another point, we continue to grow, but there is a staffing pressure on that, to maintain lower class sizes, to maintain all the electives that our kids would like, and the variety that's available at the high school. And we've largely allowed students to drive a lot of that discussion. So we're trying to find the right balance in our culture between students presenting, this is what I'm interested in, and then staffing it based on what our student interest is, but also saying there are finite resources. And so how do we find the right balance between student interest driving it and making everything available that we'd like to make available, but also, it can't be just completely a blank check from the community in the budget process. So we always try to find that right balance. And then that requires a lot of creativity to take a look at. If you don't offer a particular course one year, what does that mean so that kids during their high school experience will likely have a chance to get that course? Even if it's not in that one year, how do we offer it on a regular enough cycle so that they can get it? And then how do we make sure we have sequences in place so that somebody's taking the first couple of years of something and then doesn't lose the opportunity to finish that kind of capstone for that sequence of courses? Financial trends, Lou Alima, come on back up, please. I already sipped her apple.
Good evening. So I'll take you through the technical portion of the budget presentation, just starting with our historical trends, looking at the average increase in our budget, 3.1%. So that's been, demonstrates a continued investment in our program. You'll see that as we go along with the analytics. Our growth in actual spending, so we've always measured the gap between our budget and actual, creates the opportunity to contribute to our reserves and fund balance at year-end. Funded a great portion of the capital project by their practice. So we constantly monitor that, the Board of Education at year-end looks at that margin, and we make decisions before adopting the tax levy each year. So the average increase is 2.8% compared to the budget increase of 3.1%. Looking then at the tax levy, 2.3%. So while there's that perceived 2% tax levy, we've been managing that well before the tax cap, and we've been staying right around that 2% increase. When you look at the state and federal aid, we have had an infusion of state aid attributable to the work from Fight for Brighton, the Board of Education, and other advocacy efforts that is starting to stabilize now, and as Dr. McGowan said, you'll see a net increase in unrestricted spending of just $76,000, which supports a 0.1% increase in spending going forward. And the board has maintained stable contribution in appropriating fund balance, 2.6 million dollars, and then drawing down our reserves, about $800,000, and we've been fortunate maintaining this margin, maintaining this margin to not have to utilize that and continually reinvest in our financial position. Just looking at that growth in spending over time, the object analysis, so you can see where our investment has been over the last several years, no surprise, we're a people-driven industry, so we're investing in our people, we're responding to program needs with the addition of staff, and finding the efficiencies where we can. Stable budget allocations for supplies, services, and equipment. We have our employee benefits, some of which are contractual, most of which, with the pension costs and payroll taxes, are a function of our salaries and wages. This just shows on the right-hand side, again, this investment in salaries and wages, and how we've been able to maintain staffing ratios as our enrollment has fluctuated, we've been investing in people to maintain those ratios, which I think is, should be a point of pride for the district that we've been able to do that with the levy increases over the past several years. Looking at it a different way from a functional analysis, you can see where our investment has been over the last several years. It's in instruction where you would expect it to be. We've generally had stability in general support, transportation costs, and again, the volatility in employee benefits, which is related to our investment in human capital. Occasionally, we get questions about how does our spending compare to other districts? So I pulled some of our per pupil spending as a comparison. So the top part here is per pupil spending in instruction, and where we rank among our neighbors in Monroe County. And then I looked at where we are, general support in transportation, just as a benchmark for people to assess how we're doing compared to our neighbors. So looking at the factors, and our first stab at a preliminary or rollover budget, as it used to be called, this is where I'm seeing us trending going into the future. So $82.7 million spending, which would be a 5.6% increase. So some of what we're going to talk about in the presentation is the capital component of that and the operations component of that. So up there at 5.6, 3.8 is attributable to our core operations and delivery of service, and 1.75 is related to capital that was approved by the voters in 2017. So we'll go in-depth in analytic of the major categories, but again, continued investment in our human capital, and we'll reconcile that, but you're seeing a 4.6% increase in salaries. What Dr. McGowan said in the beginning is we're taking advantage of a really modest increase in our health insurance rates this year, just 1% our health insurance rates went up. We funded a much higher percentage, just guessing where we think rates are going to be, so that allowed us to essentially fund two years. So we don't need necessarily any more money for health insurance, knowing that that'll catch up in the future years, though. So if rates go up 5, 6%, that will have an economic impact in the future years. BOSI services, again, we'll do an analytic, but that's initial request of $362,000, and supplies and services, $934,000. And again, the debt service piece of it, $1.4 million with a 1.7% increase. Just look at where our spending is. Again, no surprise, salaries and wages is our biggest expense that with benefits is our, the human capital portion of it, and then we disaggregate where we're spending our salaries and wages. Obviously, teaching is our most significant investment, instructional support, non-teaching, administrative costs, and then all the other categories that represent our budget. So the factors impacting salaries, again, 4.6% preliminary increase reflects a contractual increase with the current collective bargaining agreements. That nets about a 3% increase. And then we have new positions that are being proposed that are in response to, as Dr. McGowan said, our emerging student needs and other mandates. So responding to state mandates, 2.4 FTE for enel and CIPE staff, diversity and equity, we're proposing a blueprint recommendation of a 0.4, and that's just a continued investment in the work that Dr. Washington is doing, and how we restructure that, and certainly more discussion to come about that, but a placeholder for diversity, equity, administrative oversight. And security, that was part of our blueprint recommendations as well, standardizing our security model at each of our buildings would be 3.0 FTE. And then enrollment, those enrollments that you saw at the middle school and high school, initially funding 2.4 FTE, sixth grade would be required to maintain our team structure and class sizes, and then electives at the high school. So that 2.4 will assess where it needs to be, but there's a preliminary allocation of that. And then if we're preparing for, continue to plan for full-day kindergarten in September of 2021, the board has been diligent about planning for those, so we don't have a big spike in 21, 22 budget year. So this would continue to fund that implementation plan with another two positions. And also, as Dr. McGowan said, grant instability, one of the budget reductions this year was to utilize grant funding for an administrative position. We'll need to refund that back in the general fund and reallocate those federal dollars to the extent that we can rely on them. Benefits, I talked about this. So we see health insurance, again, substantially funded in the 2018, 19 budget year, pension rates decreasing, so despite the increase in salaries, the pension contribution rates, and where our budget actual is this year, we could realize a slight decrease of $53,000. Payroll taxes is up consistent with the increase in salaries, and then all other benefits are substantially flat. Looking at our BOSIs, we have our administrative costs, which is a significant component of our BOSI spending. Our business and technology services, again, with the implementation of one-to-one and two-to-one program, there's support costs and operating costs associated with that. As we look at other tools, software-type tools that are administered or supported, rather, by BOSIs, those are requiring an additional investment. We will receive about 50 to 60% of that back in reimbursable aids, to the extent that the governor doesn't cap that, and then we're in a pool with everybody else. General education, modest increase, essentially a continuation of current programming. Special education, just the rollover in the rates is about 3.4% on average in special education, and then we're funding what we anticipate as additional program needs there. Occupational education, significant increase there. We're budget currently 38 to 42. We're trying to increase that to 50 students. We had several students that weren't able to participate this year, even though there was an, there may have been an opportunity for them to participate. So we want to fully fund that program to allow all the students that are interested in those programs the opportunity to do so. Instructional technology, this reflects our continued investment in hardware, instructional hardware. And then transportation costs, we have changed vendors, which the board is aware of, and improved contracts. So we moved from BOSI's transportation, who's battling driver shortages and unable to fulfill the routes that we needed, we went to a different contract transportation provider, so you'll see a decrease in BOSIs and an increase in transportation departmental costs in a future slide. Actually, the next slide. So here, we're looking at school supplies and materials. This additional funding would fund, fully fund the investment in 21st Century Learning Furniture, something that Maria Hewitt and Debbie Baker have been working very hard on. This would fund that and create a base for a continued investment in that program. We have special education, again, emerging student needs, different placements, group home placement, things like that, where the district has to advance the tuitions and then receive some high-cost reimbursement. So additional allocation estimated at this point in time. Health services paid to other district, we had one of our private schools that wasn't Brighton has moved to a Westside district, so now we're paying the health services charged by that district to support programming of a private and parochial school that a lot of our students attend, a lot of Brighton community members attend. And then debt service, $1.4 million. So this amount coupled with the $500,000 that the board has been funding over the last couple of years, would fully fund the local share of the debt service. So we'll look at that, we'll look at that next. This is a busy slide, but this just shows the financing plan for the capital project. Because of the board's investment, cash investment in the project, we did not need to borrow anything in the 2018, 19 school year. We were able to essentially pay cash for all the design and initial costs, but we will need to borrow as construction begins. So we're budgeting for initially $27 million of a ban, which is a bond anticipation note that would later become a bond, and we'd start paying principal and interest payments. The next year, we would be borrowing another $20 million based on our cash flows. We'd pay the interest that year, and then begin to pay the principal and interest, and then any remainder, we'd be in the out years, and the goal is to match And then any remainder, we'd be in the out years, and the goal is to match outflows with building aid reimbursements. So looking at our state aid, again, what we talked about is our foundation aid, $76,000 new money, unrestricted money that's not based on any categorical expense. And again, that supports just a 0.1% increase in funding. So what we talked about with the increased enrollment and increased in emerging student needs, here's our seed money for that, $76,000 despite all the new FTEs that we're asking the taxpayers to consider as part of a preliminary spending plan. All the rest of the money that came in is reimbursement for money already spent, so that's in response to 18, '19 projected spending. So total state aid allocation, which may sound like a lot, $429,000, all but 76 of that is just reimbursement based on the existing categorical aid formulas. So specific to our tax cap and building aid, so what the tax cap looks at is part of a capital exclusion. It doesn't consider new debt going forward, it considers all the building aid that you're getting and all your debt capital outlays. So when we look at new debt coming on for the 2017 capital project, the formula nets out all the building aid that we're getting in excess of our debt. Because we've been paying cash for projects, which we've been generating building aid without any debt, and because of debt coming off the books with building aids still coming on, so we have no net exclusion for any new debt coming up in the next couple of years. So anything that the Board of Education wants to fund in preparation for the full principal and interest payments is all local sharing at this point. So we really need to be strategic about building in that debt and funding it and helping the voters to understand, this was the tax impact that we said in May of 2017, and here's the full share, just a matter of how quickly we want it to bring on the books and how quickly we want to fund it, given all the other operating demands that the district faces on an annual basis. So this just shows the reason for that and why we're in a, where we're receiving more building aid than we have debt service. This is our local chart that we presented. So all this money, this more building aid than we've been receiving in debt has essentially been allocated to program at this point, so it's funding ongoing operating expenses. The board has minimized this a little bit over the years by building up that transfer to capital, so that $500,000 that was in there, we've been doing to try to minimize the impact of that. However, that's not considered in the tax cap formula. So this full negative levy from building aid prevents us from getting any exclusion in increasing our tax cap number in the 19, '20 school year. So here is then the projected levy from the capital project, this is an analysis prepared by Bernie Donigan's office. So you can see with the new debt coming on, we'll still have $330,000 more in building aid than we will debt, so there's no exclusion there when building aid is more. But then the next year, when we have to start paying principal and interest, the average net local share is $1.3 million. So that 1.4 that we said, this shows that this would fully fund it and we'd be done having the levy, new money related to the 2017 capital project. Does that make sense?
So Lou, to interrupt, I'm sorry, so really, in the one-year budget until we get over that, to get net to the good, right? Is that what you're talking about?
Correct. So until we start-
2020, 2021 budget, it begins to impact.
Correct.
Correct?
Right. So if you look at the previous slides and all our current debt, we've been receiving organization incentive aid, so when we consolidated our schools, we've been receiving close to $600,000 in every given year. So when that debt is paid off, that's when you see we have a net positive impact from current debt. And then we pile on top of that the 2017, and that's where you see this impact. So again, to the extent that we can fund it upfront, then we don't have the pressure of that in the future years when we're implementing full-day kindergarten and we're still responding to, you know, essentially a structural deficit without any state aid coming in and the pressures of the tax cap. So this is our property tax cap projections based, I apologize for the small print, this is generated from a tool that we use, Forecast Five. And so you see what our tax cap was this year, 2.3%, 2.36%. We went up to that cap this year. Rolling forward, our, the factors, so Brighton, last year, we had a growth factor, so based on our tax base, we had a growth factor of .0023, that reduced to .0012. And then these out years is what I'm projecting, just for modest increase in our tax base. So if those hold true, we look at the impact of our pilots, which are, some are coming off the books, some are increasing in the taxability, so this is where I estimate the change in the levy over the next couple of years. I am predicting that we're going to be at the 2%. We will be for the 19, '20 school year, so we will be at the 2% growth factor. And so without any capital exclusion this year, even though we have some debt coming on, new debt, our tax cap number is only 2.1%. So this tool just goes, if we go to the tax cap this year, then this is what it will be in the out years. We could see when we do have a capital exclusion in 2021, consistent with that chart, our tax cap number does go up to about 4.5% next year. So the extent that we can fund that debt upfront, build up our base for consideration by the board this year, that may help us in the future years stabilize that increase in levy and allow us to more, to focus more on our operating expenses. Just a reminder, though, unfortunately, that the, there is legislation that's trying, that puts pressure on districts to stay within the cap, so that's something that we'll have to, have to consider. But as Dr. McGowan said, we're, with everything coming due, we're going to have to look at that at some point and make sure that we right the ship and stabilize that enrollment to account for the new programming and to account for, to account for the debt that's coming up. Just quickly then, a summary of our revenue sources, we are heavily reliant on property taxes, which the property tax cap proposed to be a permanent fixture in New York State will constantly put pressure on us in the future years. State and federal aids, again, you see what the governor is trying to do is divert funds from districts like us elsewhere, also trying to cap that in the reimbursal aids. So we have caps on the property taxes, we have proposed caps on state and federal aids, and so that only leaves 8% of our budget, which primarily is sales tax. And, you know, that's dependent on the economy. All the rest are capital reserves, which have a finite useful life if we start relying on them more than we are right now. So our preliminary budget and the impact, again, our base year levy was 52, just over $52 million. If we were to account for the spending that discussed related to operations, that would require a 5.7% increase on the levy, and just the capital portion would be 2.6% increase on the levy. And all along, we were saying as part of the capital project, every piece of material, we said the estimated tax impact was $144. Because of the increased eligibility and because of our, you know, where we think spending is, we've met that commitment to the taxpayer under this current plan. So should you adopt the full levy required for the capital project, we would be within that $144 that was, that was presented to the taxpayers. Then you have some relief with the reimbursable aids, and that has a 0.8% relief. So summing those up, it's preliminary, and again, we have a lot of work to do, we have a lot of scrubbing to do, but just as planned, its face value would require a 7.5% increase in tax levy, which would equate to $399 based on current assessments. So just as I mentioned before, the fund balance and reserve considerations, that's always, I would always caution districts and boards of education to increase reliance on that, again, because it's a finite source unless we continue to budget differently. So if you're going to tighten up the margins and rely on capital or fund balance and reserves, that's just a recipe for disaster and for bankruptcy. So we have to do one or the other, we either maintain our margins and maintain our fund balance, or we reduce our margins, and then I have to reduce the reliance on fund balance and appropriate it. So those are really the board's decisions when it comes to reliance on retirement reserve and reliance on appropriated fund balance. So this is just a chart similar to what we present in years, just to kind of put it in context of where, of, you know, the decisions and what the cost is on decision. So if 1% increase in the tax levy is targeted, for instance, then that would allow for 1.2% increase in spending, and that would call for a $3.4 million reduction from this preliminary spending plan that I just, just took you through. Again, you can kind of see the chart from there, and that's the discussion we need to have, is where do we think we should be considering the debt, considering the new programming, and, you know, obviously, what's acceptable to the community. So with that, turn it back over to Dr. McGowan.
Thanks, Lou. So clearly, we have a lot of work to do. Beginning of the process, again, I want to emphasize that we will come back to the community with what we think we need. Part of the what we think we need will be questioning the community on what the community also feels like we need, and what should be priorities in the spending plan that you, as their elected representatives, would need to consider through the process. So a thought exchange will start next week, asking that very question, asking our community to engage in a conversation about the budget process and about where their priorities are and what we should be thinking about in terms of spending going forward. And we'll continue to look at our budget versus actual projections, so what we're currently spending this year, and continue to work with our budget makers, which are principals and department heads, to look at where we can continue to be more efficient and evaluate what the impact of those cost reductions strategies might be. And again, our community should look for the thought exchange and engage in that discussion with us next week or at any board meeting coming up, or any of the budget workshops, budget presentations, et cetera, all those dates listed for people on the website. And of course, as always, we will continue our advocacy efforts, working with our legislature to really discuss that issue of being $7 million short and only proposing a $76,000 increase to the aid. That has such a dramatic impact, as we've said in years before, if that money was coming to us, we could propose no tax increase. And that's really the state's obligation that we would like to see them fulfill. Do you have any questions for us?
Oh, we got questions. No, I, thank you, certainly Kevin and Lou, and, you know, there's nothing here that's really a surprise, this is a snapshot in time. I remind folks, you laid out very clearly the process moving forward, we're going to be communicating with the community in an ongoing way, utilizing thought exchange, certainly our meetings and our budget forums. You know, we always talk about how complex and difficult budget building and getting a budget that works for everyone is, and then the moving parts this year. We knew and we've planned to bring on the debt service, what was unforeseen, the political winds, you know, in Albany and really in Washington. And, you know, the Albany situation, as you articulated very clearly, there is a move afoot with the newly elected majority in the Senate, and the Senate and the Assembly and the governor all now being part of the same party, to fully fund the foundation aid formula. Whether that can ever happen or will ever happen, or the governor will allow it to happen, remains to be seen. Let's face it, we're skeptical. The other difficulty would be additional monies put in, we never know until that budget is done. And then how, under the current climate of discussion in Albany around different definitions of equity, if you will, and what a wealthy district looks like versus a less wealthy district, how much additional money we really might end up with, but I don't think we anticipate, unfortunately, a huge increase. And we'll continue to work toward that. We have our legislative breakfast coming up, we'll be going to Albany. You know, Kevin, you and Lou and I will meet with Joe Robach and Jamie Romeo and make sure we articulate our needs so that when they go back to Albany and discuss. But it's a difficult path. We message to the public around the need to renovate Council Rock at Full Day K and also the building plan that we've laid out, K-12, that we thus far very prudently managed, Larry's involved in that from the board standpoint. But this is a bit of a transition that we are going to have to continue to communicate and remind folks as we bring on that debt service, as we move through those barriers, if you will, that Lou detailed for us, we're just going to have to keep communicating with everybody and making sure we discuss the long picture and where we're really headed. So we've planned well, all of you and the people that work for the district and those partners we've brought in from the outside to help us plan financially and from a construction standpoint, or everyone's doing their job, and we just have to keep working at it every day. So lots more to come and lots more work to be done.
One of the most interesting aspects of local government policymaking work that you do and local control is the idea that you get to make change and think about things just for you and not globally, while considering the impacts of the bigger picture, right? But I think sometimes we forget that constitutionally, the state is required to provide a free, appropriate public education for every child in the state of New York, not the federal government. It's a state responsibility, constitutionally, it's a state responsibility. In this community, the local taxpayer is paying for 67% of that. That doesn't sound to me like the state of New York providing for every student in this community to the degree that they should be. So I think it's really important for community members to think about some of those real simple, basic facts and not get, not that our community be confused by, but distracted by the big numbers that the governor will throw out, about $2.1 billion in this number, and we spend this number on every student, and we do this, we do this, we do this. That's fine, that's your responsibility, that's not like a gift, that's what you're supposed to be doing, but you're not coming close to what the promise really is for kids in the state of New York. And that's really important to point out. And so the result has been, we would all like lower property taxes, but the model in New York State of using property taxes to drive money towards your local public school isn't, creates an interesting paradox, because when you cap that amount, which we're all for, have no problem with that, and when you create a permanent cap to that, fine, but then the state has to come up with whatever else is needed for kids, and that's what's not happening. So I think people should not get distracted by that kind of rhetoric, the kind of rhetoric of, well, we should cap expense-based aid, that's another proposal that the governor has. That makes no sense, we already spent the money. Those are the reimbursements that by law we're entitled to for money spent, whether it's on transportation or the building, that shouldn't be capped, that's what the community has chosen to do, and the state has a formula where they're supposed to pay you back for that, because again, that's their responsibility. I don't think you could call our GNE and say, hey, sorry, I've capped my expense, I'm not going to actually pay that whole bill, I've capped what I'm willing to spend on that, it's just not going to happen. And I don't think the state would accept, as a matter of fact, I know the state would not accept us not providing the entire service that our GNE is providing to your house. So it just doesn't seem to make logical sense to us, and we'll continue to advocate that way. But I think that's something the community should think about, is we contemplate locally, we're going to go out and ask for what we need to provide the right program for our kids, and we need our community to respond and talk about that and engage in a conversation with us. But whatever that number may be, the capped number, the non-capped number, the over-the-cap number, we're really developing a budget and a spending plan that goes out and asks people, what do you think we need, here's what our experts internally think we need, and how do you feel about that? Regardless of whatever the other arbitrary limits on that might be. And that doesn't mean it's limit less, but having an authentic, honest conversation about that is really important. So thanks for listening.
Good point. All right, thank you very much. We're off on that, I guess. Into our reports section of the evening, we have received from Lou and Dahlia, our district treasurer, the budget status report is the executive summary from Lou dated the 22nd, along with the treasurer's report from a period ending November 30th. Does anyone have any question or comment, anything from Lou that we need further on that? Then we'll, a motion please to receive the reports.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Karen, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our student representative report, Tula, welcome.
Hi. So I just have a couple things to bring up since most of, well, not most, but like some of the times since our last meeting was vacation. So first thing is, we just had our Acapulco concert, I'm not sure if any of you went to that. I thought it was a lot of fun, all the acapella groups put a lot of work into that, so that was really nice to watch. Right now, we're in midterms week, so like our first midterm started today, I didn't have any midterms, I had a final, because I had like a one semester course. And then upcoming on Saturday, we have Snowball, which is like our winter formal, it's sort of for like, more for the underclassmen, because they don't get like a formal dance at the end of the year like the juniors and seniors do. So there's going to be like a chocolate fountain, and I know the PTSA, I think, is buying snacks and stuff for that, so that's going to be a lot of fun. And I think that's it with the students, not much since our last meeting, but everyone's doing good.
Thank you very much. Good luck to all and- Good luck to all on tests this week, so midterm. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our Board of Education reports from Monroe County School Boards Association, our three standing committees, Labor Relations.
It was last week and it was next Wednesday, it was update on the harassment, New York State's harassment law by Sarah Disengard from Harris Beach.
She's one of our attorneys also.
Yeah, and it was about sexual harassment, how to prevent it. She gave a lot of examples of what districts should be doing, so.
Thank you very much. Information Exchange met on the ninth.
And you were there.
We had a big group there that night, that day. Kevin and Debbie were there, a bunch of us were there, right? Sora and Marv. That was a really great program. It was Dr. Archie, who is the chief diversity officer from the College of Brockport, presented on cultural responsiveness. And I thought it was a very entertaining, engaging, he's a dynamic individual presenter and I thought, the thing that struck me, and I did get a chance to talk to him a little while afterwards, and Debbie also met with him afterwards on a couple of things, he presented a number of the concepts in a way that hadn't really heard presented before, in a way that really resonated with the group.
I think it was outside our comfort zone, our comfortable box, I think.
He really did. And I know he's done extensive work with Brockport Central School District and both these folks have talked with him and I think a couple of other districts have engaged him in a way that we've engaged some of the folks that we're dealing with and, you know, I thought it was a good program.
It was excellent. Very, very good work.
Very well attended, so. And I think I mentioned to our group, the information exchange programs through the rest of the school year, there will be a number of them, sort of a series related to the topic of cultural responsiveness, diversity equity, so following up on much of the work that we, along with many districts, are working on. So I think you'll be very enthused about some of the remaining programs in that realm from information exchange going forward. Legislative Committee.
Because our December 10 trip to Albany was canceled, we chose not to meet as a committee on January 2nd.
Second, right.
It would have been our debrief.
Right, we postponed or canceled really.
Plans are going ahead for the February 2 legislative breakfast, which will happen before our next legislative committee meeting, which is on the 6th.
That's correct.
So we'll use the 6th to talk about what we gleaned from our welcome visitors from Albany. I'm looking forward to meeting Jamie Romeo.
It will be interesting. We did, I did talk with Sheri and I think the attendance from our elected officials is, looks like it's going to be very good that day and so we're anticipating a good turnout and certainly many things to discuss now that the Governor's budget is out, some of the legislation has begun flowing and we know a lot of the talking points, so anybody that wants to attend, if you haven't already, just call the office or send Mary a note and let her know. Again, that's Saturday the 2nd at Penfield Country Club this year because of the fire at the other place, so. BOSU's report, well, we heard it right from the horse's mouth this evening, didn't we?
We did.
Our superintendent, along with our board representative. So we'll move to other board member reports, sort of a summary of activity of us as individual board members since the last time we reported out. Juline, would you like to start? Do you have anything to add to that?
I'm working on Say Yes to the Dress at BHS, which is Thursday, February 14th, and all students are invited to come down to the auditorium during their free classes, free periods, or during flex, which is not a great time to come because everybody's free at the same time. Correct? We have dresses, we have tuxedos, we have accessories, we have jewelry, we have handbags, we have shoes, we have some pretty cool stuff this year, including some vintage stuff, which is really awesome.
It'll be very popular.
So we're excited, we start early in the morning and we're open throughout the entire school day and for about 45 minutes usually after the end of school, so if you can't get there during school. But please come down and see what we have, it's fun.
And still accepting donations of people who have formal wear?
Still accepting donations, yes.
Okay, great.
Absolutely, we could use donations.
Fantastic.
So if anybody has formal wear, they want to clean out of their closets, men's or women's, we would be happy to take it. There are boxes in the foyer here, there are boxes in the high school or at Brookside School.
Fantastic, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And it is, I did get the chance to come over for a part of the day last year at the high school, it is a fantastic thing.
It is the coolest thing.
See all the kids and they light up and finding things that are unique to them, so what a great effort. All of the folks who volunteer with that and the seamstresses who are there to work.
Three seamstresses, so almost everybody can go home with their dresses altered to fit them or shortened. And also special thanks to Rob Luce and his crew because they transport everything from Brookside School to the high school, they set up the stage with little dressing rooms for us, and then they bring it all back the next day and we couldn't do it without them, so special thanks to them, they're awesome.
Wonderful, thank you for that update. Marv, anything new?
The media and library review committee met in early January and curriculum council section that I'm in met, so yeah.
Okay, great. Karen?
Yep, I was able to meet with Marv, we sit on the same committee for curriculum council, which is exploring in depth some of our grading practices surrounding non-academic behaviors and their reporting, and that is really thoughtful work. I'm enjoying working with that group and with Julie Kopp in particular. And the diversity equity group met, you were there as well, I'm working with the family engagement group.
Back on the 3rd, that was our full group, right?
Right out of the gate. So we got more of a chance to meet with Marlo and talk amongst the different ways.
Great, okay. Larry?
We hit our second neighbors' meeting with the Council Rock neighbors last Wednesday night, pretty good turnout.
With this, again, reminding folks with regard to the construction project at Council Rock.
Yeah, well, we have completed a number of projects that are visible, like the field, the turf field and things like that. A centerpiece of this whole project is getting Council Rock ready for full day K in September 21, if Dr. McGowan calls that. But we're going to break ground within the month and then it's going to start and it's going to be going for the full three years, a lot of work to be done. We got great feedback from the neighbors on some different things that are doing, credit to Lou and the crew for some things we're doing to make sure that area remains safe for kids and it's not too noisy or boisterous for neighbors. We're going to do some parking a little bit away from there that's going to be real helpful and less disruptive to the neighbors. There's a ton of work coming, we're going to create this even greater learning environment, but it's going to start in about a month and it's going to be very visible, very exciting.
And as we remind and will continue to remind, we'll continue to communicate, we'll continue to reach out to all of our, not just our neighbors, but our staff, our families. We're going to start soon and it's going to take a while, but it's going to be a magnificent building when we're all done.
Yeah, we'll have a regular cadence with those neighbors because we are going to be going, so I think we sit with them again in April or May on a date to be determined, so we'll be getting feedback throughout the process from them, so.
Fantastic, thank you very much. Andrea?
My program review meets in February and other committee, again, our wellness committee in February as well, so.
Okay, fantastic.
Kind of the holiday break for my.
Starting out. Christina, anything for me?
Nope, everything else.
Okay, great. Yeah, much of the items that were discussed, I was also in attendance. I will mention, we did have Jamie Romeo in, our new member of assembly, who came, she came in on Friday the 4th and toured the middle school and the high school and we got to spend some time with her and talk to her about unique elements of Brighton and our principals and assistant principals, administrators did a wonderful job. We tried to highlight for Jamie those areas of programming that not necessarily mandated, but critical to a Brighton education that are always at risk around funding issues. And so we tried to highlight that in both the buildings and our folks did a wonderful job and it was great to spend a moment with her. And then the other thing I will highlight, Karen mentioned, the diversity equity overall committee has three subcommittees, as we've talked about, working this year, and I am on the hiring practices subcommittee. That subcommittee is broken into three sub-subcommittees, and for lack of a better term, and I am in a group there that is looking at the environment and climate of our district. Are we welcoming to all and how do we go about positioning our district in the hiring world to be an employer of choice? And so we're working on a number of things. It's fantastic work, I think all of us would agree that so much of this work that is ongoing in the district that has been for about three years or more now, there's a long list of that work and it continues to build and build upon previous things that have been done, so we're very excited about that work and look forward to being able to report out fully from all these subcommittees and subcommittees of those subcommittees before too much longer, so thank you everybody. Next up, we do have our Brighton Teachers Association report.
Yep.
Beth.
Hi, good evening, thank you. I'll try and be brief, I know it looks like a lot, but this is mostly photos, so make sure that you check out the website in terms of that too, because everything will be up there. So Brendan Quinn wanted to say congratulations, send out a congratulations to Hrash Singh, Olivia Azier, and Samia Islam, who won awards for their outstanding performance as delegates at the Central New York Model United Nations Conference. These awards are given to students who best represent diplomacy, advocacy, and communication skills, and they proudly represented Brighton High School. Dan Wilson also wanted to share that at one of the most recent varsity basketball games, they had a teacher appreciation night. And so the players nominated a teacher and then they walked out with the teacher and presented them with a certificate of appreciation, which was kind of a nice gesture, and he wanted to share that. Heather Bonadonna wanted to share that students in two of the sixth grade classes and her juniors are again collaborating on editing and revising essays. Maria Katsetos is bringing her classes over to the high school where Heather's 11th grade classes will be helping them with their essays, and this is their second year in collaborating on writing, and so students were emailing back and forth and being able to introduce themselves to each other. Laura Wyder and Sarah Potter wanted to share some photos and just say that the Best Buddies Club at TCMS has been very busy this year. The club is striving to enrich the lives of youth with and without intellectual and developmental disabilities, and students attend meetings to learn about accepting differences and building friendships among each other. In the past few months, the students have made kindness gardens with rocks, they went holiday shopping together, and they attended team building meetings and enjoyed encouraging one another. Laura Bogart wanted to share a couple of items, one from the Helping Hands Club, and she shared that they cooked dinner at the Ronald McDonald House in October and November, they rang bells for the Salvation Army on a Saturday evening in December, they stuffed all the flyers for the Festival of Ideas with registration and volunteer forms folded and they counted all of them for French Road, and they will be helping with activities nights at TCMS. She also wanted to share that the math team is in third place for the county and that they were also one of only three teams who scored above 100 in the meet they had just recently. Mary Ann Walter wanted to share in December that students in the seventh grade German classes learned about the origins of gingerbread. They also learned about the Brothers Grimm, they read several fairy tales, including Hansel and Gretel. So at the end of their studies, they enjoyed building gingerbread houses, 20 gingerbread houses were built and more than 150 students and teachers visited the German classroom to vote for their favorite house. Shannon Times and Eileen Care have begun meeting the first and third Thursday of every month with a group of about 20 or so motivated students for the first ever TCMS Black Student Union. The students have decided that they would like to participate in community service, visit a college, have a guest speaker, and participate in some fun social activities that they will also plan. They're beginning by prepping to celebrate Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. with a wall of kindness and videos during the TCMS morning show throughout the week, and there will be more to come in February after they plan how they would like to make an impact throughout Black History Month in February as well as throughout the rest of the year. Vivian Lopez-French wanted to share and shout out for the foreign language interns, TCMS and Brighton High School. Those interns have brought their cultures alive for the students and right into the classrooms. They've crafted wonderful holiday presentations about their countries, their customs, their music, their food, their games, and much more, they're really being enjoyed. Students at TCMS and Brighton High School learned about many cool and different traditions from Germany, Switzerland, and Colombia. Jed Koontz shared these couple of pictures, these are some of the teachers and you can see in the background as well on the photos, all of the artists whose work will remain on display in Brighton High School through January 30th, so if you haven't had the chance, go over and take a look at that. Okay, Danielle Hipper wanted to share that the TCMS students learned about journalism and media literacy, and the seventh graders had this great opportunity to learn about journalism when Brighton parent and former journalist Amy Hatch visited their classes on January 14th and 15th. Hatch is first, she was tied into Behind the News unit in the English Language Arts class and she has worked in both print and online journalism. Hatch talked about her experience in journalism, biased versus unbiased news, journalism's role in our society, and answered many of the students' questions. Dr. George Smith, who was here earlier with his Lorax group, but in the AP Biology genetically engineered E. coli bacteria to contain the glow gene, green fluorescent protein found in certain jellyfish. And this is an annual lab, but it's one of the most powerful examples of biotechnology and genetic engineering. So the pictures that are shared are genetically engineered, aka transformed, colonies in normal lighting conditions and under UV fluorescent lights. And last but not least, Kristen Cooper, K-2 Physical Education over at Council Rock, she wanted to share a couple of things. In the physical education, first three days after winter break, they started to discuss ideas of mindfulness and learning and how to focus our mind on what is happening in the present moment. Their students are learning that mindfulness is taking notice of what and who you hear and how your body feels, even feeling the emotions inside. We had a community member, Estalyn Walcoff, come into the PE classes to share mindfulness meditation exercises, helping them focus on a particular sound or object to achieve a mentally clear and emotionally calm state. In the book, Peaceful Piggy Meditation by Kerry Lee McLean, they learned that meditation can help children have better sleep, deal with difficult emotions, release negative thoughts and behaviors, and help get along better with others. And in the gymnasium at Council Rock, they have a Take Five Corner where students can take a break or calm down from emotions or feelings they're having. The corner displays posters of different breathing strategies students can use to calm themselves down with and re-enter the activities during class. And they encourage all of their students to use the new meditation strategies outside the gymnasium, and they've challenged them to build their own calming corner at home or in their classroom. So lots of diverse things going on around the buildings as well, which is great.
I'm not familiar with it, but I think I could use that.
Calming corner?
No, peaceful piggy meditation. Calming corner too.
The book is Peaceful Piggy Meditation by McLean. Try that at home.
It's budget season and that deserves a gift for Lou.
Yeah.
Every corner should be a calming.
Peaceful Piggy Meditation. There you go.
There you go. I think I should bring that in for a retreat, a book reading.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Sure, my pleasure, thank you.
Thanks for looking at it. We appreciate it. Dr. McGowan, super tense report.
I don't know where to go from there. Just a quick comment, of course, stay warm and for folks, you know, our bus stops should be plenty of distance away from the streets, there's a lot of parked cars in the mornings and so be patient as drivers try and navigate neighborhoods with narrower streets because of big snowbanks and buses run a little bit behind sometimes because of that, because it just slows everything down. But stay off, of course, the road and into driveways and on the sidewalk where the stop is so that everybody stays safe. It's sometimes hard to see small children behind that snowbank at the end of people's driveways too, so make sure kids are visible and way out of the way. And if you're not signed up to get calls from school, please make sure you do because although we alert the media, the word does get out a lot faster through those phone calls to families and it is tweeted first, so feel free to sign up, @K C McGowan, it goes out pretty quickly that way. If it's not on Instagram from two other people that own my last name as well, who are anxiously awaiting, of course, always the call. And they field a variety of inquiries every night and let everybody know they do not know, just so you know, until the morning of, of course, so. In any case, just, of course, everybody, we hope stays warm and dry and comfortable. Robotics team took first place at a competition last week, really excited about that, just want to make a quick mention of that, I know Tom will probably have in his presentation. And congratulations to our BSU for putting on a great program on Friday morning at Brighton High School for Martin Luther King Jr. Day, it was from what I told, a great assembly program. And Dr. Hall reports that it was very well attended and received and the speakers were very, very good, so we appreciate that. I have nothing else to report.
Fantastic, thank you very much.
I'm not sure if I had mentioned anything about the foundation aid tonight though, but I could talk more about that.
We have our talking points, they're ready to go, so that's important that we're prepared for that. And tomorrow, I believe it's supposed to rain and be 40.
Yes.
So I don't know about the snowbanks, but it's going to be hot, so.
It'll be slushy, so. They will likely take buses a long time to get out of there too.
Who knows where we are. Thank you very much. Couple of items of business remain this evening, folks. Could we have a motion, please, to approve a memorandum of agreement between the district and the BTA?
So.
Second.
Moved by Larry, or moved by Juline, I guess, and seconded by Christina. This is, you have this, this is a memo way to take care of a retiree healthcare situation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then finally, our consent agenda, a motion please to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Karen and seconded by Andrea. We do have one gift to acknowledge. It's included in the consent agenda. A thank you to Ms. Marilyn Lewis for a donation to the Visual and Performing Arts Department of a wool Dean Bowler hat and its original box to the wardrobe collection, which is quite extensive, by the way. Those who aren't involved might not fully realize, but that collection at the BPA is pretty extensive. We thank them for their donation. So with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Anything, any other items of business or of note tonight?
No.
Or members, anything further? Then we are adjourned until our, we will be adjourned until our February 12th next meeting here, and that date is correct, at this location. Motion please to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry, seconded by Marv. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.